Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our 6:00 PM Subcommittee meeting. Conference Subcommittee on Conference be held Monday, May 23rd at 6:00 PM. The following subject matter will be discussed. The review of the ordinance, Chapter 25, Section 24-54, Police Pay and Police Details. Officials invited to attend: City Manager Tom Eberzino, all Honorable Members of the City Council, City Solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher, Police Chief Brian Kyes, all members of the public. Clerk Colerole.
Counselor Ray Cooperrow.
Here.
Counselor Tanae Garcia. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Renada.
Here.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus. And Counselor Judy Garcia. One, two, three, four, five. You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just for the record, both Counselor Maldonado and Counselor Tanae Garcia recused themselves due to having family members working at the Police Department. This meeting was a call as a result of a communication that was received by the City Council. Counselor Tamale Vido moved this. And I'm going to read the email so that we have some background here. An email is from Jennifer Griffin. "Hello, my name is Jennifer Griffin. I live at 70 Press Card Ave in Chelsea, Mass. I was at City Council meeting last night." That was January 10th. "But arrived a few minutes late and could not read the following during the public speaking. I'm sending request to change in ordinance for Chapter 25, Section 24-54. Reason for requesting this change is because I began to look into police pay and details over time. It turned out when I requested the records, I received an email with the numbers below. NFI 2020, a total of $3,252,195.89 was in details was performed. Of that total, 469,350 was for city details, and 2.7 million was to be paid by private vendors. 2.5, nearly 2.6 million was already being paid back to the city. The outstanding balance was $187,000." That was from Lydia, who is working, works at Chelsea Police Department. The Friday of November email that distails says, "Good morning, there's no documents. States with an uptick in crime, we felt compelled to question those sworn to protect our doing to combat this rise. To my surprise, what I uncovered sparked even more dismay than what I went looking for. Apparently, a higher crime rate and less success at managing qualifies for a larger salary. After looking into the Chelsea Police Officers' pay, due to Chelsea being in the top 25 most dangerous cities, ranking 13th, Revere being a minute away from Chelsea with a higher population and the same number of officers are not falling anywhere near the top 25 most dangerous cities. After comparing the salaries to the Revere Police Department, which has 109 officers and a population of 53,692, similar to Chelsea, which is 111 officers, and a population of One would think with the numbers in the force from being neck and neck, the crime would be similar. Overall, Chelsea's paid much more than Revere officers. If that is not bad enough, when I requested records to justify the $4.2 million in details in overtime, I was told there was no records." Again, this is the earlier request made before that information was provided. "The reason for this email is to change an ordinance put into place by the city that an officer has to be at details when by this law it's not required. A 24-minute video in fast motion for obvious reason was sent to City Councils to give you an idea of what takes place when an officer's at a detail and why it is not necessary. Financially, it's cheaper to have a flagman over an officer. To give an example, one officer had 2,002 hours in details and 573 hours in overtime, which in total is 225,75 hours divided by 52 weeks, which means this particular officer worked an extra 49 hours a week, every week in addition to the 40 hours a week. This would explain why the city is potentially the top 25 most dangerous city, who can possibly be productive, working 89 hours per week. Signed, Jennifer Griffin." So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to the maker of the motion, Tamale Vido, who has sent this to Subcommittee on Conference.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I sent this to conference because, as is our role here as a City Councilor, when anyone comes with any allegations or concerns or something of this magnitude, I think it's worth us looking into and making sure that we're fact-checking and getting all the information that we need. I wasn't here when a lot of the ordinances were established, and I also recognize that what may have been good two decades ago may not be good today. And so I just want to make sure that we're always dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And so I just called this meeting so we can get more information and find out more about the potential of having flaggers as opposed to police, or even how the whole system works. For me, what I found most alarming was the hours of overtime, and so I just want to get more clarity around that and hope that we can have a nice discussion and try to figure out what's best for the city. Should I just start asking questions?
I would suggest, yes. I would say start asking questions or allow, if the chief wants to respond to what has been said so far, and then open the floor up to questions.
Yeah, so I guess I have a few comments in terms of the response to the communication. Kind of, I guess, a lot of what was put in that email is, in terms of police details, is kind of apples and oranges. I think there was some reference to crime statistics, comparing Chelsea, Revere, and other communities. I mean, honestly, I don't have no idea what that has to do with police details unless the purpose of the communication was specifying some type of penalty towards Chelsea Police Officers, which I don't think it was, but I'm just trying to kind of understand the reasoning there. That being said, just a quick note that, you know, Chelsea being quote-unquote, you know, in any list of a most dangerous city is not accurate. There was a time some years ago, going back to 2011, 2012, 2013, as we all know, it's well documented, we had some problems with violent crime and property crime and, as a result, total crime. Thankfully, we've been able to drive those numbers down significantly. As it stands right now, Chelsea is not even in the, which is great news for us, there was a time, I think, we were number three or four per capita in the country. Now we're not in the top 100, which is great. We talked at the City Council meeting just a few nights ago how the number of arrests that we were making in response to the criminal activity was, on average, about 3,500 a year, and now that number is around 600 a year. So things have definitely changed for the better, certainly. In terms of police details, just one quick comment, I guess, and I kind of think back and, I've told you guys before, I've been here certainly a number of years, and this is my 35th year, and I never knew what a detail was when I started working here in 1987. Police details were around long before I ever became a police officer, not just in Chelsea, but across the state. I know that for many years, in the 80s and into the 90s, we could never fill police details. We actually, I don't know if you guys remember, but you kind of think back in time, we used to have the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office, like, on the street doing details. The Chelsea offices, it just wasn't attractive for them to work details for a lot of reasons. Most notably, the rate itself was really, really low. So it just, but over time, that's changed. Over time, through collective bargaining, there was times when the two unions were able to get, I think, fair and reasonable pay raises. There was other times, perhaps, when they did not, in comparison to other cities and towns. Kind of as a bit of a consolation, the quote-unquote hourly detail rate would come up a bit, whether by a dollar, $2, $3 an hour, over the years. And that was, again, a bit of a consolation in terms of the bargaining that took place in lieu of a pay raise oftentimes. I know the number of details, and I know in terms of the amount, the dollar amount, there was a time, I guess, thinking back, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then over the years, half a million, then certainly a million, and then, like everything else, the construction work and the roadwork in the city, pretty much, there's something happening every day. There are Chelsea offices that work them. There are Revere offices and Winthrop offices and Everett offices that also work them in Chelsea via our mutual aid agreement. We rely on them to help us out when we can't fill details. Overtime, I know there was a brief reference to overtime. Overtime, to some, might be considered a benefit, and perhaps myself coming up through the ranks, when I think back, I looked at it like I would never say no to any overtime shift. You know, unfortunately, to the detriment of my family, but I would just work whenever there was shifts available. That mindset is more or less changed in this day and age, kind of going back for the last 10 years or so. The overtime that we do hire is all pretty much forced overtime. It's very rare that someone volunteers to work an overtime shift. We have mandatory minimums for staffing, and we have to, unfortunately, when we need shifts to be filled, we have a policy whereby we have to hold people over from leaving, and they basically have to stay on, whether it be another four hours, another eight hours, and so forth. And I guess, and I'll definitely take some questions, but just kind of the last point, just on details in general, police details. There was a time when this, the issue kind of came up statewide back in 2008 under the Patrick Administration, and, you know, I kind of think back, and I was heavily involved as a young police chief back then, and I remember thinking, I just couldn't understand that, I know when the issue of civilian flaggers was raised, that some, the main issue that was brought up was, "This is going to save the state money." Flaggers would do the same job as a cop for half the money, half the rate. And on its face, that seemed to make sense until the, you know, we kind of dug down and we got all the, did our research and got all the numbers, and at the end of the day, there's something known as prevailing wage, there's something known as who's ever going to be, in terms of a company that's going to employ these folks, they're obviously in business to make money. So at the end of the day, when it came down to it, the amount of money that it would cost for X amount of civilian flaggers on a street would be essentially almost the same as sworn police officers. So the savings was 1,000% moved. And then the idea of having officers who are off-duty, who are basically on their day off, or on their time off, in uniform, with a, you know, obviously with the radio, you know, in full uniform, with the weapon, gun badge, the whole nine, being able to respond in the event of a large-scale event, and it's not just quote-unquote "just in case." There's been many, 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 I said in Chelsea, there's definitely been hundreds, God knows, across the state, thousands of incidents where officers have responded to a high-profile incident that took place within their immediate proximity by virtue of the fact that rather than having five or six officers on the street, you might have 25 with these different, you know, officers on details all around the area. And again, for the most part, that are not being paid by the city, but outside contractors. So for the life of me, you know, again, 2008, 2009, we talked about this, and it's come up every now and again, hasn't come up in a while. And again, you know, our respect to anyone that, you know, and certainly the Council, you know, like Tamale just said, she wants to kind of get the facts and ask questions, and I respect that 100%. But, you know, just in terms of the issue being raised, to me, it's very, very straightforward. These officers that, you know, I don't know, you know, in terms of how much money they make, how many hours they put in, that's all on them. What they decide in terms of their 40 hours, beyond their 40 hours, is all a decision they make to supplement their income, if they can manage that. But I just think, and again, just reiterating the last point, I mean, we all can agree, you know, police visibility is important. We all can agree that visibility of officers, uniform officers on the street, certainly is a deterrent to crime. There's no way of measuring how many crimes we prevented by having officers in a given location at a given time, but certainly, you know, common sense, I would think, kind of prevails on that one issue. But those are just my general comments to the communication, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have as well.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifying questions. Last week during budget hearings, I believed you said, and I could be wrong, but I'm asking, are detailed officer, police details considered to be off-duty?
Yes, they're off-duty, correct.
But you just said that they have a weapon, a gun, and a bag, so is it normal for them to be in a police detail off-duty while they have their weapons and...
Yeah, I guess to clarify, it's off, quote-unquote, off regular...
Tamale, can you be sort of speaking to the microphone so we can all hear you?
Sure, sorry about that.
It's quote-unquote "off regular duty," so we say off-duty. It's, you know, regular duty is officers that are sworn to work a given shift, and then quote-unquote they have their assigned days off, or they might be working midnight tonight, and they're not obviously working until midnight. So on their time off, a police detail, you know, I guess the phrase is an off-duty police detail, but when they're activated and they're actually working a detail, now they're quote-unquote "on duty." Not regular duty, but just, it's a police detail duty, if that makes sense.
Got it. The other question is, I just want to clarify, is it an ordinance and/or a state law that requires a police officer to serve as a detail in public ways?
So in the city of Chelsea, I have the, there's a brief ordinance that I have in front of me that was mentioned, I think, in that communication, Section 24-54.
But it's not a state law, is my question. It's a city ordinance.
That's what I just said. I have the city ordinance in front of me, correct?
Yeah, so there's nothing on the state level forbidding us from, "We cancel details and now we have flaggers?" If we pass a local ordinance?
Well, good, Tom. Sure.
I think some, if it was a state law, there are some laws around the state law.
Yes, so there are regulations where the state would allow for a civilian flagger on certain municipal roads with the, and I don't have the regulation in front of me, but my memory is if the speed of, if the speed limit is less than 45 miles an hour, you're allowed to have a flagger on a municipal road, and there's some other restrictions. So in Chelsea, we have two impediments to, if this council ever wanted to use civilian flaggers as opposed to police, and it's not anything I would recommend. I think it is in the city's best interest to have sworn police officers doing details as opposed to civilian flaggers, even if there were a marginal difference between the pay of the detail rate and the prevailing wage paid for a flagger, which is not insignificant, it's quite high. There may be a small differential between that and the detail paid for an officer, but regardless of that, my recommendation would be, we are much better served with sworn officers. But if this council ever wanted to proceed to consider, you've got two local impediments. One, this ordinance, which specifically requires police details, you'd have to change this ordinance. The second impediment is the collective bargaining agreements with the police unions, which allow for details, the practices to have police details. So if you wanted to get rid of police details, you would, that's a mandatory subject of collective bargaining and would require the city to then bargain this at the next round of negotiations, just as we had to bargain the residency requirement. So those two impediments currently exist. First is the ordinance, which you can take care of pretty expeditiously, if you wished, I wouldn't advise it, but you could. The second one is a much more time-consuming effort because it would require collective bargaining, and the next time these two contracts are up is in July of 2024.
How about, my other question is, how about, I understand for private entities, they pay or they request a public police detail, but when the city itself is doing roadwork, why is it mandatory to have details? Who pays for that? Who's paying the detail for the police officer to be there for city work? And why are we...
Typically, the city is paying. If it's a city project, we are paying for the detail work. And we build that into our budget, and we build that into all of our construction budgets because we are paying for the officers to show up. It's a city responsibility. What we are not paying is the administrative fee, so we're not paying ourselves a fee. And on a detail that's privately done, the city gets a 10% administrative fee. When we are calling for the detail, we don't get charged our own administrative fee. So there's a slight differential.
I'm thinking about just the need in the community and just the hit that we've had in the past couple of years. And I understand that there are certain rules or certain details that would require a public safety official. I get that. But, and I get the mutual aid agreement, but it's kind of like, why are we paying police officers outside of our city when we can potentially hire flaggers to fill those positions, those details, instead?
Paying officers outside of our city.
Yeah, that come here due to the mutual aid agreement.
So I would say probably the same two impediments I mentioned before, although this wrinkle of officers outside our city is an interesting one for collective bargaining agreement terms. But at the very least, this ordinance prevents us from doing that. We have to have police details pursuant to this ordinance.
Now, are there any details? Are there any details that... No, you already answered that question. Okay, so I'm going to just make one last comment and then open it up for other councils, see if they have any questions. And it's that, the only thing I disagree with what chief said is that any police officer working above their 40 hours is kind of, is at their discretion. And I understand police officers needing to take details to supplement their income when we're requiring to live in a city that's not affordable for anyone. So it's kind of like we put them in this situation where they kind of have to overwork in order to try to make ends meet. But the quality of life of our police officers is also very important, particularly given the need and the demand in the city. We're asking police officers not only to prevent crime and to be in public service, but to be community stewards and to do a lot more than average police officers do, and I've heard from many police officers that are friends, that they feel that they're not getting paid enough now. And so I just kind of feel like we put them in this predicament, but at the same time, who is monitoring or making sure that these police officers are working 80-plus hours a week and that that's not affecting their job? That they're able to show up in the way that we want them to show up, in a way that's healthy, that's sustainable? Because if they are working all those, and also the other question I have was related to that, because the first part is more so a common and concern for their safety and their health. The second part is, I'm sorry, actually, let's leave it there because I'm drawing my...
Let me just respond because it's an anomaly. There may be one, first of all, we have a rule on how many hours an officer can work in one given day. They cannot work more than 16 hours in a given day. We've had that rule forever. If there is one or two officers that work a lot, that's one or two. The vast majority of the Police Department does not work a lot. There was a time when I was coming up and I would work myself personally, probably 40-plus, 40 hours a week. And many officers that were my age would do the same. Those days are gone, for the most part. Now, an officer works their 40 hours in maybe eight hours. In the eight hours they work, usually they're held over. If it's overtime, they're held over. They may decide to voluntarily work a shift on a detail, but that all depends. It's all totally a personal decision. But to think that, you know, I know you kind of went on with that, but to think that most officers are working 40 hours plus 40, not true. Absolutely not true. And your comment about officers having to rely on working extra-duty pay like police details, yeah, couldn't agree more. I think, I have the union presidents behind me, and I know they advocated very strongly for certain pay raises, I know they were before the council and so forth, so, you know, not going to get down that rabbit hole, but I agree with that statement.
Yeah. I mean, that's all I have for now. Somebody else might tickle something in my brain later, but that's all I have for now.
Counselor Todd Taylor, then Counselor Recupro.
So do we know, do we know the actual ballpark rates for flagmen?
I think they're in the upper 50s, but I'm not positive.
Uh-huh. And how much do we pay for police details?
The, I think the police detail rates are around $50 an hour.
$50 an hour, that's...
Which is pretty much, the rate for the Chelsea officers is pretty standard from this general area, 51, 51.
61.
61. Is it 61, Flo?
61.
The rate that the officers get is the, there's departments that get far more than 61, I know that. We did this survey, but the Chelsea officers are pretty much in tune with the Police Departments in this general greater Boston area, for the most part.
And how many, ballpark, how many details per week go on in the city of Chelsea?
There's probably, for the most part, they're Monday through Friday during the day. There are some that go into the evening. There are some on occasion that happen on the weekends, but Monday through Friday, you're probably talking, on average, about 10, maybe 15 details a day, some days less.
A day?
Yeah, well, the summer months, they're going to be higher. The winter months, not so much. But, yeah, pretty much, that's the number.
Okay. Okay. And is that, is that pretty much, I would assume that when it's warm, there's more details than when it's cold, there's not as many. Is that right, or no?
Yeah, it's the roadwork, correct. You know, when they have the ability to do a lot of the projects.
And do we have any idea if this, I'm assuming that Lydia came up with the numbers for what was, for fiscal year 2020?
So that was a public information request, Counselor, and yes, Lydia did supply that information. I'm not sure if it's exact information because it's from someone else, but yes, she did supply it.
Yeah, okay.
Just to remind you, Counselors, it's not just roadwork, it's, for example, we've got about to have carnival for 10 days. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just the mic.
So it's not just roadwork in the summertime, we also have carnival and events that require police details for public safety reasons, not just traffic, but also alcohol and partying and crowds.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Yeah. And two, well, two other points, I mean, just to kind of, I think you kind of hit towards it, but number one, you know, officers have legal authority to stop a motor vehicle, meaning they put their hand up, stop. And if someone refuses and decides, "I'm late for work, I'm going around that office, I'm taking off," officers can legally stop the motor vehicle, and not that we encourage this, but they can actually make an arrest via Chapter 90, Section 25. Civilian flaggers obviously don't have that authority. We run into those problems even with the school crossing guards in the morning where people, you know, they'll stop cars and people just decide, "I'm late, I'm going right by everybody." And in terms of having officers, especially in Chelsea, arguably the most densely populated city in the state, there's pedestrians, as we all know, everywhere. And this motor vehicle traffic, it can be insane. And the idea that, you know, if the officers decided tomorrow, they're going to pack up their bags and say, "We don't want to work details anymore, we're all set, we're all in a good position," the city would be in gridlock, number one, and then the potential liability because of accidents and so forth would be through the roof. So obviously, they're there to serve a very important purpose.
So just, sorry, just one more question. The mutual aid are what cities and towns?
Chelsea, Winthrop, Revere, Everett, primarily. We do have some other ones we don't necessarily utilize, but we do, those four communities are our four communities. We share personal resources and equipment pretty much all the time.
So with maybe the exception of Winthrop, I mean, Chelsea, Everett, and Revere, I'm guessing would be just as many or more details than Chelsea, which would add to the number of details available for Chelsea Police Officers, correct?
Meaning officers working in another community.
In other, in other...
In theory, yeah. I mean, we thought, you know, these mutual aid agreements have been in effect for 25 years, and honestly, you know, the officers behind me could comment, it happens, it doesn't happen that often. For the most part, it's very, very, if there's 100 details, two of them, maybe one of them was outside the city.
Okay, all right.
Everything else is here.
Okay, so that gives me a better idea, I think, of what actually occurs. So for the most part, you keep it in-house with the, what's in the city first goes to...
Cheryl just reminded me, we also have what's known as special police officers. These are retired Chelsea Police Officers that have to maintain their 40 hours of in-service training, go to the firearms range, they're medical and CPR, and have a medical visit once a year. That we allow them to, if they're in good standing, to be sworn as a special police officer. They're on our pecking order in that we have our full-time officers, we'll have the first priority at certain jobs. By the way, whoever the supervisor is doesn't just kind of pick and choose who's going to work. We have a very strict policy, very comprehensive policy. It's basically based on contractual language, which says that details shall be assigned on a fair and equitable basis, and it is essentially very fair and equitable. But after the full-time officers, the retirees can sign that they're available for... But, after the full-time officers, the retirees can sign that they're available for given shifts and work those details as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Recupro.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of questions. Here says, in this paper here says, "A twenty-four-minute video was fast-motioned." I never, we've never seen that video. Does that exist? I never seen it. Have you seen it?
I would have to, I would have to ask the individual sent the email, and I plan to ask that later on. But, if you want through the chair, I can ask. She's here. Is where that video is, existed? Was it emailed to the city council or? And if you, unfortunately, you have to speak into the mic through...
So, it was attached to the email. I sent a twenty-four-minute video along with pictures of officers and what they do throughout the day. Like, when I go to get my coffee and I'm told that there is four full-time officers sometimes on at a time. And there's three of them sitting at Starbucks having this big pow-wow, so I sent pictures of that. I sent pictures, it wasn't just one detail, I have several. And where I sat for, you know, an hour, two hours, I just sent you a clip of twenty-four minutes of what takes place. So, you know, in terms of like, you know, it's better, it's safer. When I tell you they were so distracted talking to each other and looking at their phones that it wouldn't have made a difference whether it was a flagman or an officer, you can clearly see it in the video. So, if you don't have it, I'd be happy to resend for you guys to look at it.
I don't know if we can receive something that belonged to our emails anywhere. I didn't get anything.
I don't recall, so I'll...
I think I remember getting it, watching it.
You did, right?
Yeah.
It's probably back there, so we'll have to look for it again.
It was definitely a few months ago.
And just, you know, just a comment on that. And so, you know, and I'm not going to say, in terms of what the video showed, I didn't see it. But, you know, have there been times when officers are not, if they're looking at their phone and not paying attention? I'm sure there are. Does that make me happy? It does not. And the union presidents behind me know that. We have supervisors, we have strict supervision. There's been many officers that have been disciplined over the years for inattention to duty or neglect of duty, whether it be on regular duty or details and so forth. And certainly, the residents, the public in general, folks are out there, folks have their eyes, folks have their phones, they can record things, they can see things. It looks terrible. Hopefully, it's more of an anomaly and certainly not routine. I just know that, you know, I'm out there as well, I have an unmarked vehicle. People don't necessarily see me coming. And if I see something that's unacceptable, I'm the first one. And again, the gentleman behind you, behind me will back me up on this to get out of the motor vehicle and set them straight on the spot. They're there to work, they're there to perform a duty, they're there to keep people safe. And to the extent that I get a video sent to me or I get a picture sent to me, it's always addressed, it's always investigated. And if there's discipline, there's warranted, it's always imposed.
Point of inquiry, Mr. President?
Wait a minute.
I just want to clarify because the Chief keeps mentioning the union president, but I'm not sure, there's two gentlemen in the back, I'm just curious who it is.
Mr. President of Chelsea Superior Union?
I'm sorry.
It's Tom McLean.
Chelsea Police Superior Officers Union?
Okay.
There was, for those at home and for the record, Thomas Flynn, the president of the Superior Officers...
Lieutenant Tom McLean, president of the Superior Officers Union, and Anthony Morales, the president of the Patrol Officers Union.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Recupro.
Another question I have here. Over here it says, from what I can read, it says, "All the officers don't do this, right?" Because it says fifty-two weeks, fifty-two weeks and they work forty-nine extra hours weekly to the additional forty hours. That would go over the sixteen hours that you say they can work.
Yeah, the, like I said, we have a...
That's not accurate, right?
No, we have a rule, sixteen hours, no more than sixteen hours a day. And it's monitored and there's no exceptions. And actually, let me think about this. Well, ordinarily, the rule is sixteen hours a day. We did have a bit of an adjustment of what's called eighteen point five. We do have one particular shift, it's an impact shift, it's a ten-to-half-hour shift. And those officers do have the ability to work a detail or an overtime, so that's kind of the exception. But, for the most part, it's sixteen hours a day is the limit. And that being said, there's no one that works sixteen hours seven days a week because the opportunity's not there. That's number one. And number two, again, I have a couple of offices that come to mind that do work a lot. I'll answer your question, but a couple of offices that do come to mind that do work a lot, but that's more of the, certainly the exception than the rule.
And Counselors, remember, just because they were paid the four hours doesn't mean they had to work the four hours. Remember if we call them in. So, some of these numbers are not specific as to how many hours they actually worked at that time. So, I just want to be clear about that. So, once you call them in, they get paid for four hours.
She's right. I mean, contractually, there is a, contractually, there is a four-hour minimum. So, if officers are there a short time, it's a minimum of four. That doesn't happen that often. But, there is, on the other side of that, there is another contractual provision. If an officer works more than four hours, five hours, six hours, they get a minimum of eight. So, there are times when officers could work six and a half, seven hours and they're getting paid for eight. Again, that's standard in collective bargaining agreements for police across the state.
Chief Kais, you said that this is going, I want to hear it from you again. You said that police officers on detail deter crime. So, visibility deters crime, right? Is that what you said?
It's what I said. Do you feel differently?
No, 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 I just want to make sure that that's what, that visibility, right? Deteres crime, that is your opinion, right?
So, if, certainly, I'm a police officer, that's my position, my point of view. If I was not a police officer, to me, it's common sense that officers out there increase visibility does deter crime. That's, yes, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to hear. That police officer visibility deters crime, right?
Well, you asked it twice already. The way you're saying, are you thinking something different?
No, 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 I just want to make sure that that's what I heard because I'm kind of deaf.
Okay.
I'm deaf on one side.
That's what I said.
All right. I have no more question, that's it.
Counselor DeJesus.
To piggyback off of my fellow counselor, good evening, Chief. Could you share with us some of the moments? Because I've been informed that there have been details where some of our very own officers have saved lives, stopped robberies or assisted in some type, preventing some type of crime while being on detail.
Like I say, hundreds. And I have one that, you know, certainly, you think of violent crime, you think of God forbid, someone took out a weapon, hurt somebody, shot somebody, stabbed somebody, killed somebody, robberies. But, I have one that does come to mind. And great story, but heartbreaking at the same time. And this was the late John Brutini, who John was working a detail in Park Square. There was a woman who saw him because he was out there in terms of in uniform directing traffic. She pulled over, she was with her husband, her baby was choking. Her baby had swallowed a penny. And she got out of the car and very upset, obviously. And John went to her aid. And baby's name was Brianna, was about a year old. And took the child and through his training, was able to give back blows and chest thrust and have the penny removed. And the little baby survived. And, you know, when John passed and we had the funeral over at St. Rose and little Brianna, you know, some years now, she was getting older. She was about four years old and the parents came to the funeral. And, you know, truly heartbreaking. But, a situation like that, when you say that the officer is in the right place at the right time to make an arrest, a timely arrest and catch somebody that committed a crime, that's one thing. But, to be at the right place at the right time to save someone's life, that's quite another. So, yeah, and there's been many, many, many examples like that. And if, you know, the council ever wish, you know, we'll do the best we can ever try to put a list together. But, these are just some, you know, pretty incredible stories.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Vito.
I have also heard stories of detailed, of police details that are hired for details that they don't show up or that they show up late. And I also heard of a situation where there was a police detail and a crime actually happened when a private entity hired a police detail. And while the police detail was there, they went into the private entity's truck and stole his tools. I don't know how true that is because, you know, you get complaints constantly. But, can you shed light as to whether or not any of that is true?
Well, the only light I'll shed is, there's always more to the story. You know, I mean, if you have specifics, I'll be more than happy to talk to you offline. But, anecdotally, I can't respond to something that I have no idea what the specific entity is.
Who's that, and, uh, can't think of the name? The ones that are doing the sewer, the water sewer, whatever, it don't matter. I'll have details, I'll follow up, I'll follow up. And then, I'm just curious if there's any other municipality in the Commonwealth that has flaggers as opposed to police details that anyone knows of?
Not that I'm aware of.
And why, I kind of have an issue with us needing police detail for our own, for our own work that we're doing here. I get it if other people feel more comfortable with having a police detail. But, if our own city workers are cutting a tree or whatever, is there, is there a way of changing this ordinance so that we don't necessarily need a police officer?
The officers, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, or the officers in the back. I, it's very rare, if ever, that the Chelsea officers are working with DPW, other than snow removal. But, for the most part, the, what Tom was mentioning, city-paying contractors, outside contractors to do work on the roadways, that's when the contractors request officers to be there for their safety and the safety of others. But, as far as someone, DPW workers, cutting trees or doing patching, quick patches in the road...
Yeah, or painting lines.
There's no police officer there.
Cheryl, into the microphone, thank you.
So, when Tom was referencing city jobs, sometimes, mind you, the grants are paying for it also. But, it's down Broadway, we have, we hire police details, but it's not the city...
You still have to...
It's not the city performing the work. It's a contractor that's performing the work that we need a detail for.
On behalf of the city.
On behalf of the city, so.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought, that sounded a little funny for me. Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Chief, for coming. My question is, when an officer works eighty-nine hours, is the, do you have faith that this officer do his job? If he works sixteen hours straight? I think the person should be tired, is tired being working so many hours. If that person works eighty-nine hours a week?
I don't know of anyone that works eighty-nine hours a week.
What did you say?
I don't know of any officer that works eighty-nine hours a week.
Okay. No, I'm reading what I said here. That, how can a person be productive working eighty-nine hours? So, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, we have a rule, we're mindful of officers that need rest, like everyone. And again, that was the reason why, again, there was a time when officers could work twenty-four hours. You know, fight a parlor, they have a different job, but they work twenty-four hours. I know they have rest, you know, when they're inside quarters. But, again, it's been probably at least twenty years, maybe longer, that we scaled it back to no more than sixteen hours. And again, there was a time, and I admittedly was mentioning that I was one of them that was in the mix, that was working my shift and another shift on top of that, to make ends meet, to use Damali's words, because that was the truth. This generation, thirty-five years of age and under, does not work sixteen hours a week, even though the opportunity potentially could be there from time to time, especially in the summer. And again, it's not just Chelsea, it's the same everywhere. They might work forty hours, which is not a bad thing. The work-life balance is not a bad thing. But, they might work forty hours and they might work, if at all, another eight hours on top of that. But, if there's someone that's working, again, we have a couple of officers that do work a lot. And I don't know the number, but it's not eighty-nine hours a week. You know what I mean? It's because, again, the opportunity to work details is there Monday through Friday, primarily, which is forty hours. And their other forty hours, it might be an eighty-hour week every now and again. But, it's something where, you know, the person has their weekends off and they get their eight hours sleep. And they're in conformance with our rules.
I just want to share an incident that happened a couple of years back, maybe a year and a half. It was in Benningham Square, it was a Saturday morning. There was an officer supposedly working at Benningham Square. And all of a sudden, there was two guys fighting there over drug or money, whatever it was.
Bless you.
And the officer was there on the cruiser, looking down on his phone. And I was, you know, a few steps away. I went and knocked on his window. And I said, "You see that, they're fighting over there." The officer didn't even see the fight. The other guy knocked him down, to the other guy, and ran toward a compare. And I told him, "That's the guy who hit the other guy." And he wasn't even aware, he wasn't even paying attention, so...
So, let me ask you a question. I know you've made complaints against police in the past. Did you make a complaint on this? Did we follow up? If it's something that I can look into?
I actually did.
You did?
To you, yes. No, I'm just sharing this, that, you know, not everybody, not the officer. And I make complaints, yes. And I don't say it, no.
So, just so I'm clear, because you made, you know, only because you brought this up? So, you've made many complaints? And you just said you made a complaint to me? And then, you just decided to tell me, again, the same complaint in front of everyone at this meeting on details?
No, I'm just sharing what some officers, I'm not saying all of them. I'm just sharing that some officers do that. So, that guy...
Is this, is this specific to a detail or is it something different?
I don't know if he was doing a detail or not, he was just parking there in the square.
Just about police, okay.
I'm just sharing that, that, you know, I'm not saying all the officers.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, but I have to do it, you know?
Thank you.
We have, we had a question earlier about the eighty-nine hours and so forth. And actually, this has all been a result of an email. But, I just haven't been able to, I think it's fair to provide the person who wrote this to speak. And I saw the Counselor Vito look at me and, you know, kind of thought the same thought. I'd love to allow the individual who wrote this say what she has to say about this subject matter. And if there's any questions, the fellow counselors would like to follow up. Because, again, this is the reason why we're here. So, just like to ask if you'd like to have a few comments and then so forth. Go ahead.
Okay, so, when it came to the forty-nine hours that I provided to you guys, I did not make up those numbers. I came to the city hall, I requested records of overtime, which I still have at my house. And I'd be glad to forward that specific number that I gave you with the officer's name. I have a list of what they got paid for their regular payroll for the year. And I have a list of details. I have a list of the amount that they made. I was told by Pam Johnson when I asked, "Do we have a way to, you know, show that this person made, say, a million dollars? Do we have something to show that this person worked a detail and we have record of it?" I was told, and when it says in that email, there's no document, I was told there is no system that tracks the overtime. I responded, "So, that means we need to take their word that this person worked a billion, a million dollars' worth of overtime." Because in the email from Pam Johnson, it clearly states...
Overtime or detail?
It clearly states for the details.
Detail.
The details, that they do not have a system that tracks it. So, when we say how many details they did, then why didn't they provide it? And why would you state that?
I don't know who they is, but we do.
Pam Johnson.
Okay, for overtime, regular duty, the details, the full-time, for everything, longevity pay, every category of pay is broken down, we can get it through the unit system here in the city.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just, and from personal experience, I also know that whenever I've requested a detail, the officer always presents a slip and I have to sign. And there's a documentation for each slip. And officer cannot get paid unless that slip is signed. So, there is like a trail of paperwork also.
Is the trail of paperwork only with the Chelsea station?
And again, only for, and that's only for details, that's details only.
So, the city hall does not? So, when Pam Johnson stated, and I'm just going to say this again, when you're telling somebody from the city, I'm asking you a question, I'm asking you to verify something. If you don't know the answer, you don't respond with, "We don't have a system that tracks it." You say, "You know what, let me check with the chief and I'll get back to you." Because as far as I'm concerned, there's no reason for me not to trust what she's telling us, you know what I mean? So, it makes me think it's either that they're not communicating and they're not on the same page or maybe the records just lie with them if they don't have it.
I would have to say that if the city is going to charge their ten percent, you can bet that the city has a way to track. Because, again, the city is charging each contractor ten percent of the, whatever detail there is. So, there is definitely an invoice manner that whether you are a carnival, whether you are a contractor or such, you get a bill from the city. You actually don't get it from the city, the police department. You get a bill from the city and they reimburse. and they reimburse, or it could be a fire detail.
So what about in regards to, like, if it's a city detail and we're providing? Where they don't have to pay the ten percent, we're still tracking it the same way?
Well, the contractor still has to provide the detail. Um, the private contractor hired by the city to do the work still has to sign off on those. And that will then go that fashion, but.
And just, you know, one more point to that, only because we were very proactive, I don't know if it was in the Chelsea record this year, when they asked, we would give them every, every single year, it would come out in the newspaper, in the month of February or March, to break down every single employee of the police department in terms of whether it's the regular pay, detail pay, overtime pay, and the total, that would be years, for, you know, twenty-five plus years.
Okay, and I think when, when we talk about, like, the crimes being, you know, they're not as bad as they used to be, I beg to differ. I live in Chelsea, and I can tell you, within the past month between, you know, the stabbing and killing near Home Depot, the innocent lady being shot, I mean, if there really was truly enough police presence, I feel like it wouldn't be happening. And thankfully, I've been able to work from home, and I can tell you, I drive around the city all day long, and you're lucky if you see one cop car. I will say, in the past few weeks, since, you know, this date was up and coming, I've seen a lot more officers than I've ever seen, ever, in the past few months that I've been driving around, honestly. And I think in regards to details versus like patrolling, I think we need to have more patrolling. I think there's, there's not enough cops out there, and I'm not sure, and I don't want to say it for sure, but, you know, I've been told that there's only full, like, four full-time officers on at a time. And if that truly is the truth, okay, but I mean, there's not enough people patrolling. You can see, I can drive by, just, I'll give an example, Central Ave, three officers hanging out, talking at a detail. Over by DPW, another three officers hanging out, doing a detail. I had, didn't see not one officer that day, not one, not sitting in the square, not driving around, not one officer at all that whole day. But you do see them over there. So I just think there does, there needs to be more patrolling and if there was enough, there wouldn't be as many, you know, shootings, fights, there wouldn't be the stuff that's happening and going on right now. There, there would be less of it.
So, and I, I want to make everyone aware, to Jen and both the chief, uh, we're going to let them wrap up. The councilors, if you have any follow-up questions, feel free to reach out to either one, uh, but it is six fifty-four, I have to cut this at six fifty-seven, so we have two minutes. I'll allow Jen one more minute.
Okay.
And then I'll let the chief one more minute to final, final comments. Thank you.
I think, I also just want to say, in regards to the cops at the school, I don't think that's helpful. Um, I drop my child off to school every day, they sit in their car, they're not out engaging, they're not helping cross kids, they're not helping in any type of way. They're sitting there, parked on the crosswalk, on their phone, in their car, and they do not get out. So I think we need to consider it. We, we keep saying that the flagman's going to cost the same, but do we have numbers? Do we have something showing? Like, this is your, an opinion until we see it on paper. Is it true that it really costs about the same? If it is, then maybe we need to consider, is it safer to have the police patrolling on the street versus doing a detail? I, I mean, I guess it would be up, to me, I would say the people. And if you ask around, I would think a lot would agree that there needs to be more patrolling. And I think in regards to, um, normal lease, I could be wrong, but my understanding was you are married to a cop or divorced and have a kid, so I would think too, yeah, no. Okay, if that's not true, but they were saying that there, there is a possibility. So if it is, or if you're related to Melinda, I do think it might be a little bit of a conflict of interest.
Not, never been related, uh, never been married to an officer.
So just, I, I know I got one minute, and just, just, just a quick response. I think there's a, there's a common misconception that, and to Jennifer's point, that when, when an individual rides around the city and they see Officer A, Officer B, Officer C on a detail, um, and they, they see maybe one or two officers quote-unquote on patrol, that the point is that these officers, the five in my example, would be better served to be all on patrol. We have, on average, in, in like, on one of the shifts, twelve officers assigned to patrol at one time. And the officers on details, if the details were, were to stop today, these officers are on their time off. So any officer that you see, Officer A, Officer B, Officer C, it isn't that they're now available for patrol, they're always available for patrol on their regular assigned shift. If officers on details, and again, if you, you count them, any one of the councilors or members of the public or someone at home, on a given day when you ride around, if they are gone tomorrow, they're gone tomorrow. It isn't that the patrol officers or the individuals available to patrol the streets are going to increase. Those numbers stay the same. That's the point. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. President, can I also add that I am not related to Melinda, for the record?
Yes, you can add. Um, thank you, everyone. We are now at six fifty-seven. We'll be back here at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.